Welcome to the July 11, 2022, Commission Meeting.
Up in the middle in a second.
We will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Harris, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
God of peace, we invite you to preside over this meeting. Even if we have difference of opinions, give us unity of spirit. Help us each to listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals trying to promote their own agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on our shared mission. Amen.
Amen. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Byers, will you call a roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinzler.
Here.
Mr. Poole.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
Here.
Mr. Pajali.
Here.
Mr. Waddington.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Commissioner, before the minutes of our meeting of June 27, 2022, what is your pledge?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the June 27 meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved, and here is no objection, that motion is approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and share with us your name, address, and your agenda comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Commission Staff, Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. On the item number two, which is the bidding for the Justice Center at the former 222 Meg Street, City Hall, I followed that process very, very closely, all the way back into 2017. And I find it rather ironic that, at that time in 2017, this building was crumbling, and a quote from the City Commission at that time, "This building cannot be saved." And suddenly, it's, you know, it can be saved. You know, it's just kind of ironic. Number two, which is item number five, which is $100,000 from CDBG for the purchase of 3201 West Monroe Street. It's my understanding that the Health Department cannot purchase that property themselves due to levy constraints. But the question I would have for this council is, why can't the county buy that building and then hand that over to the Health Department? Number two, there's no mention in the supporting documents whether or not we're going to get our $100,000 back, you know, from the county over some amount of years, you know, if that's even going to happen. And then number three is, of course, the presentation, which is item number seven, on the Greater Sandusky Partnership. And with this type of agreement, there's always concerns, and maybe the person that's going to give this presentation can answer this for us, that the $150,000 in funds, there's always that opportunity perhaps for less transparency. And I guess my question would be, is the Greater Sandusky Partnership going to be taking over any programs that the City of Sandusky currently administers? And what comes to mind to me is the Economic Development and Senate Committee and Issue Eight funds that are earmarked for economic development. And if the city does take over any of our programs, whether or not those minutes and agendas would be available to the public, along with any possibility of actually the public being invited to those meetings? That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger. Any additional residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda?
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I have a couple of concerns here, a couple of them run off at him. The 3201 Monroe Street, that's a duplex, and the city's going to pay the $100,000 for that. It's coming out of CDBG COVID fund, capital funds, that's what they told me, county to pay demo and asbestos. It's five years, and indeed will be transferred over to the Health Department. Why wait the five years? That's what I want to know. Why can't you just transaction it over to them right away? And I don't understand how this house, this is a duplex, how it can cost $100,000. That's in a kind of a rundown neighborhood there, and there's a bunch of duplexes there. And when I looked it up on the county website, it was valued at $48,000. So I'm just wondering if this is overvaluated? And why the county hasn't bought this property? Why the city has to pick up this $100,000? So that's that one. The next one, and I haven't heard this presentation, so I'm at a disadvantage here for this agreement with the County Chamber of Commerce. They're changing their name to Greater Sandusky Partnership, and it's a nonprofit quasi-government. It's a $150,000 contract for six months. And that's coming out of capital funds. And if I have any of this wrong, please correct me. $30,000 of that $150,000 is going to be owed to Ecadeck Contract, which we usually pay Ecadeck $30,000 every year. So they'll be obligated to pay Ecadeck $30,000. There's going to be quarterly reports due from this nonprofit. So I imagine that those reports will be made public. But there was no details of the scope of work. It was too broad. Scope detailed, okay? How can you pass this $150,000 without having any details here? It just says, covers enhancement of economic development tourism activity and redevelopment capacity in the city. How is it going to do that? I have a concern for this nonprofit. From what I'm hearing, there's a lot of agencies that are going to merge into this. These nonprofits have gotten too powerful. When you get into nonprofits, there's no transparency. There's no meetings that you can go to. It's all private. They don't have to do anything. And I'm worried about that, if they take over any city duties. And since we're going under contract tonight with this agency, I have to mention this. Commissioner Harris is a board member of this nonprofit. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Alex Jones, 1405 Erie Boulevard. And for tonight's meeting, Director of the Erie County Land Revitalization Corporation. Just wanted to state for item number five, how excited we are in our organization to be able to support the project there at 3201 West Monroe. We see a lot of community benefit there. I think our number one driver is that we want to use the organization and the money that we have to enhance the community, better the community. I think this is a great way to do it, and we're excited in the months ahead to get that done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Additional comments from residents regarding agenda items? Next on our agenda is a presentation by our City Manager on Sandusky Development Priorities. Mr. Whoopser, the floor is yours.
Evening, City Commissioners, audience, and staff. With the legislation for the Greater Sandusky Partnership contract on the agenda, we wanted to take a minute to update the Commission, as well as the community, on how this fits into the broader development priorities that exist for the City of Sandusky, all of which really go back to and build on the Issue Eight partnership from 2014. Several of you were on the Commission, and others, of course, followed that closely in the community. One of the things that we identified in surveying the community at the time of asking for support for Issue Eight was that economic development and neighborhood revitalization were amongst the top priorities that the citizens of Sandusky had as they were looking to the City Commission to help lead them into the future. So as part of the Issue Eight ballot language, we included specific funding set aside for economic development, housing, and marketing from the Issue Eight funds. The funds for economic development and marketing come directly from the admissions tax, and that was part of the partnership that we struck with Cedar Point. The funds from housing come from the growth in the income tax, which was one of several categories that we dedicated new income tax to. And I'll talk a little bit about how that's gone. And then in 2017, as the Commission was building out several priorities, one of the things when we were looking at redoing the Jackson Street Pier, we knew that communities needed centerpieces of public spaces to bring people together. But the best practice in that regard showed it was not enough simply to build a strong public space, but for to truly activate the community and lead to the development within the community that you wanted to see, you needed to program that space regularly to turn it into a true center of community. So the Commission at that time, at a time that they were also passing legislation for the first time to tax vacation rentals, which as many of you know are a growing, there's a growing amount of vacation rentals happening in Sandusky, is to take the increase that was going to come from passing the bed tax to not only come from hotels, but to come from lodging units of one unit or more, was to take that growth and to dedicate it to a public programming fund so that we could provide programming to the community, again, and this will be a theme as we talk about our strategies, in ways that were predominantly designed for locals, but also made us a stronger destination community. So we began to set aside a percentage of our lodging taxes pegged to that growth to support a programming fund in the city, and that's been very successful. The first two years of that fund were actually set aside to help build the Mylander Pavilion, which has been a huge success. I know our Finance Director says we're very surprised with the amount of times it's been rented this year and the amount of revenue that it's bringing to the city to create a space in the center of the city. So, and those are mostly local events, whether they're weddings, high school graduations, we had the St. Mary's High School prom was held there this year, for example. So that's economic development, but it's also community development in the sense that it helps build stronger ties. And then finally, in 2021, as part of a much larger partnership with Cedar Point in which they supported the doubling of the admissions tax within the community, as well as the creation of a parking tax, one of the things they wanted to see was a continued commitment to strengthening the destination development aspects of the city. We are largely, on a certain municipal capita basis, the largest destination in Ohio. We need to continue to build on that in ways that not only bring tourists to our community, but create year-round employment and to provide amenities that make us a more attractive place to live and to visit. And again, going over the Housing Fund, that's been a tremendously popular program. It flies off the shelf when it gets announced every year. We've made over 1,000 grants to housing within the City of Sandusky since the passage of Issue Eight. The Economic Development Fund, we have impacted over 200 businesses with the creation of those grants. And you just have to bike or walk around the city to see in our neighborhoods, in our commercial districts, in our commercial corridors, the revitalization that has taken place over the last seven years with those funds. In addition to that, the Programming Fund and the Destination Development, this is a picture, I couldn't even tell you which night that is at the pier because it's happening more and more often that as we bring the pier to life with festivals and events, thousands of people are coming down to the center of our city, building community and supporting the local economy and local businesses. In addition to that, again, as we work to position ourselves as a stronger destination, not for the benefit of tourists, but to build on the tourism that takes place here to strengthen the year-round economy and to attract amenities that are good for locals and visitors, we have adopted plans, including the Downtown Master Plan. This is an example of how we can build out the Jackson Street parking lot with a hotel and conference center, in addition to needed parking in the community that can be supported by the Destination Development Fund. And so as we look at Sandusky and its future, at the end of the day, as we do community and economic development, we want to make sure that all of our residents in this diverse community benefit, and that ultimately our goal is to provide a higher quality of life and to be more economically competitive so that we can stabilize and grow our population through attracting people and investment into our city. And we really view that there are sort of three legs to the stool of how we're going to accomplish that, one of which you're going to hear directly from Joe Roman as he talks about the creation of the Greater Sandusky Partnership. And we believe that the reason we're investing in that tonight is as one piece of that three-legged stool, and how do we make sure that we're a part of a diversified and strong regional economy? And the reason that we partner, instead of doing that ourselves when it comes to that, is that a lot of the best sites ultimately are not in the City of Sandusky. We're a historically built-out community. The KBI site's a great example. The potential of the land at NASA is another great example. So we need to make sure that investment that comes to those sites outside of the city, we know are going to benefit Sandusky. We don't have jurisdictional responsibility, nor should we be the only one providing funding to do that. So what we do is we partner with folks like Cedar Fair, like Civista, like Firelands and many other of our local companies, as well as other government agencies like Erie County, Shores and Islands, et cetera, so that we can invest more. So the investment that we're making, or asking the Commission to make in Greater Sandusky Partnership tonight will be one piece of a much larger piece of funding that regionally is going to go to building a stronger regional economy. Much of that investment will take place in Sandusky, but all of it will benefit us. And so it's a way to look at our entire labor market and our entire region as how that can be strong. And so to do that, we'll partner, and we'll do that through partnering with the Greater Sandusky Partnership. In addition to that, we know that while the work of regional economic development includes targeting manufacturing and other industries, that we can't shy away from why Sandusky is so well-known to the world and what is attracting people and visitors and economic development investment, is that because we do have a destination economy here? We do have over 10 million visitors a year. So our destination economy work is going to be based on, how do we grow that? How do we continue to strengthen our waterfront? How do we bring more year-round investment through tourism? Ultimately, how do we invest in amenities? Whether that's a downtown, or a bike trail, or anything that we invest in that makes us a more attractive place to live and to visit? And then finally, we know that if we do a great job on the regional economy and we do a great job on the destination economy, the reality is unless we have competitive and strong neighborhoods that meet the needs of every person in our community, Sandusky is not guaranteed to benefit. Because the reality is, a lot of people talk about Sandusky's decline, and they think that is when manufacturing started to decline is when Sandusky began to decline. But if you look at the U.S. Census numbers, Sandusky's decline actually started 20 or even 30 years before we started to lose manufacturing jobs. And that's because people were choosing different housing types in communities like the township outside of Sandusky. So as we work on the regional economy and as we work on the destination economy, we absolutely have to make sure, at a time where people are finding their way back into cities, whether it's because they value diversity, because they devalue walkability, because they want to be a part of a historic community on the waterfront, or because they're looking for a community that embraces all types of housing, including multifamily and single-family housing, we need Sandusky's neighborhoods to be strong and competitive. And we have been investing in them, and part of this is to continue investing in them. And so that gets into how we fund economic and community development, which, by the way, the total of this 1.83 million is slightly over 5% of our total general fund. So it's a modest amount. None of this represents the vast majority of our general fund budget, which goes to providing police services, fire and EMS services, street services, parks, investing in all of our infrastructure. 95% of our resources have and will continue to go strengthening our neighborhoods and our city through the provision of those services and the maintenance of our existing infrastructure. But the amount that we invest in community development is about 1.83 million. That comes from, just to get into the sources, is historically we've provided that $30,000 year to Ecadeck, which we will continue to do. We set aside that $500,000 from Issue Eight Economic Development, about $400,000 from Issue Eight Housing, $50,000 for Issue Eight Marketing, $150,000 is what we generate in that programming fund, and then starting next year, in a full-budget year, about $700,000 annual admission taxes for destination development. When you see the breakdown, is what we're seeing is the recommendations that staff has been working with community partners, et cetera, to look at what is the best way to utilize these resources for the benefit of Sandusky to accomplish stabilizing, growing our population, and attracting that investment in the three ways that we mentioned. So the biggest one is neighborhood development, housing, and small business support. And that's going to continue to see the investment we're making in housing. And then now that we have the Destination Development Fund from the Cedar Point Partnership, we'll be able to take more of that Issue Eight Economic Development money and make sure that we're deploying it in our neighborhoods. And then finally, Destination Development, and the Regional Partnership, which you'll hear a lot about more from Joe with the Greater Sandusky Partnership. Just some highlights of what you can expect to see in each of those with regional development supporting GSP, supporting projects that span beyond Sandusky's borders, including the Route Six and Sandusky Bay Pathway, and other projects that will strive for the regional economy that will take place in and around Sandusky. For Destination Development, the continued implementation of the Downtown Master Plan, support in the creation of Destination Sandusky, a nonprofit that will be formed in partnership with Greater Sandusky to market use programming, to attract tourists and enrich the lives of locals, and then finally, taking advantage of Sandusky's unique assets by increasing public access and identifying development opportunities along our waterfront. And then finally, the Neighborhood Development. And I am excited, we've been advertising this position, and we've made a selection to create a Chief Neighborhood Development Officer position. The successful candidate for that position, Colleen Gilson, is with us tonight, if you could stand. I've known Colleen well for a while. She is a veteran of neighborhood development in Cleveland. She's been a great leader in that field for probably 20 years. Yeah, 28 years. I didn't want to go too long on the years there. But when I first became aware of Colleen, she was the Executive Director of the Community Development Corporation in the Tremont Neighborhood, which is a really well-known neighborhood for mixed income and just great cultural vibrancy. She has gone on to lead and be a leader within organizations that have been dedicated to the advancement of Cleveland's neighborhoods. Her and her husband Sean are relocating to this area full-time, and we're going to be very fortunate to add her to Jonathan's team and the depth of experience that she'll bring to the community. In addition to that, we're working on the South Side Plan right now, the implementation of that plan, accelerating our housing construction, rehabs throughout the city, and then really focusing on those neighborhood corridors, whether we're talking about Hancock Street, West Washington, Tiffin, et cetera, those streets that are in neighborhoods that have businesses and residences, and they don't function like they did 40, 50 years ago, but they still have a lot of that mixed-use building stock. How do we give a shot in the arm to that to really help revitalize what's going on in the housing in those neighborhoods? And again, this is all in addition to the investment we've been making in parks, and community policing, and recreation, and streets, and trees, and sidewalks, all of which, though, we believe, when we continue to make these investments incrementally year after year, will become a city with a stronger economy that continues to be a destination, that has incredibly diverse and wonderful neighborhoods to live in for all those who choose to make Sandusky home. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joe Roman to speak specifically to the Greater Sandusky Partnership.
Thanks, Eric. I'm going to introduce the content a little bit, and then Joe will get into it. But good evening to everybody, and thank you for allowing us to address the Commission. You know, as we sit here before we kind of really get into this, Eric put up there, Issue Eight was 2014. And when you think back, we have had one great ride, a decade of growth from 2012 to 2022. And so a thank you is in order to this Commission for the leadership that it showed. And the City of Sandusky has been a tremendous leader in the area, showing what's possible. Issue Eight, as we said back at the time, was really about the community standing up and taking ownership of its future, which was a huge step forward. And I think really what the growth and development's attributable to is the people saying, this is what we want, and we're willing to work to get it. And so how that plugs into the Greater Sandusky Partnership was it was a concept that we started talking about, actually, back in 2014 as we looked at the interconnectedness of our communities and the interconnectedness of our region, and how that expansion into that region would benefit all of the pieces and the parts. The Firelands region, as it was defined, is 270,000 people in it. That's a louder voice for all of us to get together. And when we have a consistent message and a strategic plan that's all-encompassing, and people have their pieces and their parts of that, it helps to emphasize that we can be successful together in an interconnected way. And so we held community workshops, and we talked to people from the various, from stakeholders in the region. And what came out of that was the idea of establishing Greater Sandusky Partnership as a regional, scalable, sustainable, private-sector-driven economic development entity. And that ultimately was launched. And we recently, as was mentioned, the Erie County Chamber of Commerce became the first affiliate of the Greater Sandusky Partnership. And so what does that really mean? The Greater Sandusky Partnership serves as an umbrella, we're a parent corporation. And its purpose is to help the other nonprofit organizations realize their mission by providing expanded executive bandwidth, by bringing the business community to participate in a more full-throated way, both financially and more importantly strategically, helping to drive those initiatives, which then allows each of the organizations to have a sustained strategic focus, which allows them to work on Horizon projects instead of constantly worrying about how they're going to fund themselves for the next year. So it unleashes the potential that's already there. As I said in my opening comment, we've been successful. So this is about how we get to the next 10 years, 2022 to 2032. What that's going to require is leadership that's collaborative, that solves problems, and is impact-oriented. And what I mean by impact-oriented is they're thinking about what's happening to the people as a result of the activities. So it's about everybody and the impact that the actions are having and the projects are having on those people. So the Greater Sandusky Partnership seeks to unleash that potential that's already here by augmenting and helping support those folks that are already working so hard on that, and mobilizing that potential into action. Because you go through a decade of growth, you're climbing up the mountain, the air's getting a little thinner, it takes more people to carry the load, right? Because it gets harder. And so that's what it hopes to do. And I want to just emphasize that it's business-led, and it will be transparent, as was mentioned in the open. There'll be reports. It's action-oriented. Get, what does, how can we help? What's the report out? And when you say business-led, it's just like we all work in businesses. You know how there, it's very exact, and what'd you say you were going to do? And what actually happened? To bring that perspective to the table, we believe is really going to help unleash potential. I'll let Joe get into the particulars of how we're going to execute that plan. But that's the overall vision, and we, again, appreciate your support and the leadership that you've shown, and we look forward to working with this body as we unleash the next 10 years of growth. Thank you.
This is also an organization with a press code. How do we work this, Eric? It moved on here, but it's... Hello, everyone. While I'm waiting for this, I just want to put my two cents in, hopefully three cents with inflation by now. You're hiring a great lady back there. I worked with Colleen on Cleveland neighborhood issues for many, many years. I would say I kind of worked for her because she really taught the corporate community in Cleveland about investing in neighborhoods and how important and complimentary it is to what you're doing in your downtown. So you hired a true leader there, and I think you're going to really benefit from it. So congratulations. So I'll be real brief, because I know you have a lot on your agenda. Duff went through some of the overview. I actually came out here for the first time at some of the local business folks' requests about five or six years ago. Eric and I also had the benefit of working a little bit with each other in the Cleveland area, so we weren't strangers. And so that history that Eric gave, going all the way back to Issue Eight, I've been fortunate enough to follow as well. I think it's very impressive. Recently, we've also had an outside group, a national group, look at this region, look at the momentum, and say, to Duff's point, how do we take that next big step? Because, I'll tell you, I stole it from him and Cedar Point, and we did a lot of stuff in Cleveland. We built ballparks and housing, but our theme was always, you got to be like Cedar Point and build a new roller coaster every year. You can't ever stop. And I think that outside confirmation of creating something like GSP is important. Here's our main sort of goals at a 30,000-foot level. I hope you can see them. They'll be in your, you'll be able to get a copy of this, obviously. But if, I think the most important one, because everything flows from that, is how do you create a go-to private organization with the resources of scale to make things happen, but the interest and the understanding that unless it works with the public sector, nothing is sustainable? You got to have both. And that's that secret of investing in public-private partnerships where each of us has skin in the game, each of us has a say in what we're going to do, and then everyone has a say in getting it done. But our role at GSP is to make sure that... But our role at GSP is to make sure the private sector is carrying its weight in that partnership. And that's what we want to be. That's about the simplest way. You see some of the other ones. This, I think, is an important slide, because this is one I hope you take advantage of. I mean, it's pretty simple, but really, we see GSP as being able to play a number of different roles. Obviously, as you go up that scale, the amount of investment and leadership time and so forth increases. But even at the convening level, sometimes you just need somebody outside the public sector to bring everybody together. Because maybe there's more than one public sector that needs to be involved. Maybe it's more than one region that needs to be involved. And we see ourselves as being able to play that convention-convening role, and then step out if that's what makes sense. And as you go up, play an advocacy role. And I have a slide at the end of this presentation that shows a recent collaboration on advocacy. Sometimes the business sector's got to lead. If it's a business-driven issue, if it's about investing in technology, if it's about increasing entrepreneurship in your region, sometimes that's what the business community really has to lead, because that's what we know best. And all the time, we have to be measuring and optimizing and judging whether we're making the right investments. In order to do that, you have to have, and this is not coming up, but there's some text there that's missing. What GSP established at the very beginning of its tenure in December of last year was that we can work with other private-sector organizations. We can work with the public sector. But how are we going to know if we ever succeed? There's a lot of individual missions out there. You know that. It's a lot of individual goals. There's no collective goal for this region that at least this individual has noticed. We think, and I think you guys have been part of this with your actions, that establishing the North Star, and Eric said it, the North Star for this region has to be population growth. No, none of anybody's goals, none of your goals, none of your investments will ever be optimized if we get a 20, 30 census. It's the sixth time in a row our population has decreased. We all look at this place and say, wait a minute, fresh water, some cool downtowns, these big roller coasters out here, rockets down the street. Why are we losing population? People want to change lifestyles. Everybody's looking for a new, better place to live. The density of urban, traditional urban areas isn't as cool anymore. The prices go up, travel gets easier, we can work from home. Sandusky has so many things going for itself. But what GSP is going to do with its investments and its partnerships with people like you is to say, every single investment has to be measured against whether it's contributing to population growth. If it doesn't have a chance in hell, excuse my French, of helping to grow the population, let's let somebody else invest in it. Let's focus our investments where we can grow and stabilize the population of Sandusky and of Erie County, and that in turn will increase the population of that whole Firelands region, because we are at the center of it all, in my opinion. We talked a little bit about, so these are the entities that we believe are tremendous partners. Some exist, some we need to create. One correction, Duff already mentioned that our first affiliate is that red box called Small and Midsize Membership Base. That's the Chamber of Commerce. We didn't change the name of the Erie County Chamber. It is the Erie County Chamber. It's now an affiliated partner of the Greater Sandusky Partnership. And that's what we hope to achieve with many other partners. And again, the correction I noted was that Commissioner Harris is actually on the board of the Chamber of Commerce, because he owns and operates a business here. And that's the input we want at that level. And then connecting the inputs from those small and mid-sized business leaders into everything else we do. That's the whole secret sauce of what GSP is all about. Akadak is already functioning as an economic development and workforce entity. We're working with them. Perhaps we'll work with them even more in the future. But the point is, they've got to be connected. They run Firelands Forward. You all know it. It's a workforce entity. It needs to be connected to those small and mid-sized businesses. That's what they get by being aligned through GSP and the chamber. We think we could investigate, and with your help, creating a new real estate firm, company, that's focused on catalytic investments in the neighborhoods and downtown of Sandusky. Colleen's very familiar with the work we did in Cleveland on that. There are so many different kinds of funding out there that this city has still not tapped because we don't have the right entity to tap into it. Federal New Markets Tax Credit are just one example of the kinds of funding that we could bring to this region if we had the right entity to do it. I don't know what I did there, but go back here. And then lastly, which I'm going to end on, think about the investments we're asking you to make in GSP, not as dollars you will give to us and then we will go spend them, but dollars you will give to us and invest in us that we will use to leverage other money. We've already been successful at that, in this idea of economic development branding. You're all familiar with how many years, and we've had some great success in marketing this region as a place to come and play in the summer. That doesn't grow our population. That doesn't even necessarily show those visitors that play what a great place this could be to invest in, or live in, or retire in someday. We haven't been branding the unbelievable assets of this place under a comprehensive economic development brand that complements but exceeds that of a hospitality brand. So we have already successfully been able to get a pretty large grant from Shores and Islands that we will match with your dollars and our dollars to stand up a new organization that we're calling Destination Sandusky. That's a name that we will revisit. We think we're pretty close there. But the point is, this is the brand that sells. This is the Traverse City, Michigan of this region. They're growing, we're not. We can fix that if we all join in, row in the same direction, and measure those investments that we're making against that standard. And so we're already going this year to create that new brand complimentary. We're not vacating Shores and Islands, because it's an important brand for the region. We're going to be complimentary to it and build upon it based on the population aspect. This was the advocacy example I mentioned. You know, and Duff commented on it, how can we have a bigger, louder voice? You guys know, that's what advocacy is all about. In order to get more attention, you need to have more voices saying the same thing. And what we just recently completed with your help, with your involvement, was bringing some major actors together in Erie County to focus on the state capital budget. We got more this year, and we got money for 80% of the projects to prioritize. That had never happened here before. We're going to get better next time. But we started the process. My hope is that this is exactly what we use in tandem with you for the state budget, because the state capital budget, as you folks know, was $3 billion. We got more this time in Erie County than we've gotten before. The state budget is going to be $80 billion, almost 30 times the size. We need to know what we're going after. We need to know what line items we want to jointly increase for this region and this city. And that's what we can do together as one entity. So this is sort of just what we will look like, one new organization and so forth. I'd rather just turn to see if there's any questions or discussions.
Comments or questions, Commissioner?
Commissioner Brady or Mr. Roman?
Or Mr. Milkie.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I'll jump in just a little bit. You know, I've been involved with Sandusky Government for a while, and I think this is one of the most exciting, important developments that we've been able to look at during this period of time. As you stated, as Duff stated, Eric stated, unless we build our population, our goose is cooked. We can't do all the things that we want to do, and there's nothing here, there won't be anyone here to enjoy them. I'm not going to go through everything you said, but I think that's a really important point to emphasize. And I think that Eric's point about the importance of investing in the neighborhoods, which you underscored as well, is critical. I think we need to understand that this is not about one thing. It's not about downtown. It's not about business development. It's about neighborhood development. It's all those things all at the same time. It's complicated? Yeah, it is. It's really complicated to do it all at the same time. And what this allows us to do, what the Greater Sandusky Partnership allows us to do, is to move up a little higher, and we get a perspective that we don't presently have. Sandusky Government is focused on what it does and what it does on a day-to-day basis. And frankly, these days, we do it pretty well. But if we and our partners in the community move up, we can see things, we can see solutions that we can't presently see because we're busy looking at the things that we have to look at. So I think that's one of the really important things that GSP brings to bear. The other thing I think is really important is, and I've looked at this from the other side of the table, if you will, where does business go when it has an idea and it thinks this is what the community needs? You've got so many different governments to speak to. How do the business, you talk about convening, how do you bring the business together? How do you bring the governments together so you can have that conversation and do that important work? And last thing I'm going to say is that, you know, we've talked, Mr. Brady and I are talking earlier about this. People today move to where they want to live. They don't move to where the company is that they want to work for. If you go back 50 years, it was absolutely true that people would move to where the business was. That changed somewhere in there. I can't put my finger on exactly where it changed. But people now, businesses now, move to where the people are that they want to employ. We need to be that community. We're getting to be that community. What this allows us to do is to get there faster and achieve those objectives that we have. So I'm really excited about, thank you for the presentations.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I couldn't agree more. And I think it's even more exponential. I think people were looking to where they wanted to live first. I can't point to the exact time either, but five or seven or 10 years ago. But the pandemic made it even more likely, because if you're going to work remote, boy, the place you live has become more important. And you can, I have a son that lives in Chicago, works remote. I've got another one that lives in Cleveland that works remote in Sweden. That's the way of the future. And we have everything here to be attractive to that group.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
It occurred to me that a couple of things, I think, worth mentioning. Number one, and I think Mr. Webster probably touched on it in his presentation, I'm not sure any of us realized how important Issue Eight was. If you didn't realize it when we passed it, you sure as heck are going to realize it now. Because Issue Eight allows us to carry the water, to make things like this possible. So we are indebted, not just to the leadership that got that on the ballot, but to every resident that chose to support that. There were a lot of them that did. The other issue that I think is worth mentioning is, I hope no one perceives this opportunity that we're about to take, hopefully about to take, that we're pivoting away from tourism. We are not. We're going down another road. And, you know, whether you're in government or you're in business, sometimes you got to go down a lot of roads before you get to where you want to go. Sometimes you have to go down, and then you got to turn around and go another direction. But I'm convinced of one thing, and that is that we are a stronger community, we are a stronger society when we work together. That's what you're going to allow us to do. You're going to put us together with the private sector, you're going to put us together with other government sectors. We're not going to be entering into litigation with other government sectors. We're going to be joining with those other sectors. So you're pitching a very large tent for us all to get under, and I couldn't be more excited about what comes next. I think this commission and prior commissions have accomplished a great deal. This is going to be a very big deal going forward.
Additional comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Paul.
Mr. Roman, thank you for your presentation. What I've taken from this is that you have a clear vision of what we have done well, and you articulated the things that we have not done that need to be done. And if your organization is able to identify a measurement by which we can determine the money we spend is being spent wisely toward increasing our population, then that in and of itself is something that I'm prepared to support, because that's something I totally agree with, what you said. We need population more than we need another place to buy a beer. And if you can, if your group is going to provide us with that measurement so that going forward, we're able to identify, is this money being spent well or is it not, then I don't see anything on the horizon better than this. And I guess I would ask you, this $150,000 that's on the agenda, are you going to be, you'll need, I need to know that this is going to work. I agree with everything that you said, have for a long time. I'd like to say, come end of the year, I think there's going to be more legislation that's going to want to continue this partnership. So let's just talk about what you can do between the $150,000 you want now and what you're going to have to show that I can continue to support you after that.
Well, clearly, I think it was there, some of the investments we've already committed to make, like in Akadak and standing up Destination Sandusky, will be the biggest ones. But to your first point, we've already launched some census work. I mean, I can show you the census works that shows we've gone down in population, which age groups, blah, 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 blah. We're doing work now to find out where are the opportunities for growth, and then how do we invest in them? How do we align ourselves for 2023? That work will be completed by this year. In fact, we'll have a big conference in the fall. All of you will be invited. We're going to hear from the people that are doing them. We're going to hear from people around the country that have looked at similar kinds of situations and mapped strategies to address them. Because if we're going to have strategies for that census growth, like you just talked about, we've got to set those goals together.
Well, I'm totally excited about the possibilities here, and if you share that information with us, moving forward, what you're doing, how you're going to get there, so then I'm prepared to support it, and I'll invest the first $150,000 to see how it goes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Thank you, Mr. Milkie. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various legislation going to have a motion to accept. No communications. Second discussion. No objection. Motion will be approved. Hearing no objection. Motion is approved. Commissioners, we have four items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of the consent items on the regular agenda to the regular agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I could find the agenda item. I do wish to have the item regarding the approval of the transfer of the liquor permit.
A.
Number A. Yes, Item A.
Item A will be moved to the regular agenda. Ms. Myers, you present the consent agenda less Item A.
Yes, Mr. President. Item B, Amending Ordinance Number 22-110 to Correct Scribner's Errors. Item C, Approving Encroachment License to Firelands Regional Medical Center for and Existing Sign. Item D, Agreement for Transportation Services with Erie County Veterans Service Commission.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Murray.
I move for the adoption of Items B through D on our consent agenda pursuant to Section 14 of the city's charter.
Second. Then a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call and rule on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Those ordinances are passed. We'll turn to our regular agenda, and starting with Item A.
It's a liquor permit for Urban Wave Enterprises LLC Warren Street Bar and Grill.
Commissioners, having heard this request for a liquor permit relocation, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I would make a motion to ask the State Department of Liquor Control to conduct a hearing on this as opposed to a simple transfer.
Second. Then a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
The reason that I make the motion that there be some further scrutiny in connection with the transfer of this license is that it is my understanding that the operator that wishes to move the license from one location to another has a history of non-cooperation with our Sandusky Police Department and some trouble at that location. And before that trouble simply moves to another location, potentially a larger location, I'd like to make sure there's some scrutiny given to whether that transfer is appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Chief Oliver, I wonder if you have any information regarding that issue?
I do, sir, and I would concur with Commissioner Murray's statement there. We've had some problems with this establishment. It's now moving to another establishment in Cleveland Road, which I don't think is a proper venue for a bar this size anyhow. But we've had some issues in the past with the owner at his previous place. Commissioner Waddington's had complaints that he's brought to my attention, too. Going forward, I just think the residents of the neighborhood would be very happy to know that the commission's taken a proactive stance to at least have these concerns heard in front of the Department of Commerce. And ultimately, it's up to the hearing officer. But I would be glad to bring some evidence and some reports and some different issues that we dealt with over the last couple of years from this owner and this bar. And I think going forward, I think the Department of Commerce is probably going to be on the side of the residents as well, but that's for another date. It's just taking a proactive approach to keeping potential problems out of that area.
Thank you, Chief. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I'm going to support this because there's no reason to not have a hearing if somebody has some concern about it. Since I don't think we've ever done this before, that I can recall having done this, I would have, would have just preferred having the information before I vote to support this about whatever these problems are. It's nice that we've alluded to, I've had some problems. But if you had information in the future, please. Fire Department also, if you've got a problem that you want me to single out a bar owner for something, you need to have a little more than just your concern about the public might not like it, so. Thank you. And if you would, send the stuff to me.
If I could follow up on that?
So I know what you're doing.
Yes, Chief.
Okay. I didn't know that this transfer was taking place until very late last week. We have multiple, multiple reports, and I'd have to do redactions for public records. But I absolutely will show you what we have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, if my memory serves me correct, didn't we have somebody come and complain about that location?
Yeah.
And the things that had been going on there, late-night activities, and the neighborhood was really upset. There may have been, I know there was one person, there may have been more than one.
Mr. Oliver to speak to that?
Yes, sir. That location is actually just next to this location, so.
Just east of there?
Yeah. We've dealt with that issue, and now it's moved over to the plaza.
The same parties?
Yes. The same residents will be very, very happy that you're taking a proactive approach to this.
Excellent. Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That motion is passed, and we will request a hearing from the state on state liquor control. Ms. Myers, you present Item Number One now.
It is requested an ordinance be passed adopting Amendment Number Three to Ordinance Number 22004, passed by the City Commission on January 10, 2022, making general appropriations for the fiscal year 2022, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules and full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
A tip of the hat to the steadfastness of our city engineer, Mr. Klein. There was a lot of pressure a couple of years ago when the south side of Perkins Ave was repaved. And at the time, he said, we can't rush this. We have a lot of underground work to do. There's a lot of engineering to do. We've got to get it right. It's more important that we get it right than we get it done fast. We did try to coordinate at the time with our fellow local governments. It didn't work out, but we're going to do it now, and we're going to do it right. So I appreciate you're not bending to the pressure.
And now doing it later, ours will look better longer. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present Item Number Three, please.
It is requested an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first and final change order for work performed by Mark Escavating and Trucking, Incorporated of Norwalk, Ohio, for the Cedar Point Causeway Wetland Project Phase One and relating to the Sandusky Bay Initiative in the amount of $9,035.35, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules and full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Given the proximity of this development or project to my home, I've consistently abstained from voting on that, and I will do again so tonight.
Understood. Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstained.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present Item Number Three, please.
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Perkins Ave Waterline and Resurfacing Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules and full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
A tip of the hat to the steadfastness of our city engineer, Mr. Klein. There was a lot of pressure a couple of years ago when the south side of Perkins Ave was repaved. And at the time, he said, we can't rush this. We have a lot of underground work to do. There's a lot of engineering to do. We've got to get it right. It's more important that we get it right than we get it done fast. We did try to coordinate at the time with our fellow local governments. It didn't work out, but we're going to do it now, and we're going to do it right. So I appreciate you're not bending to the pressure.
And now doing it later, ours will look better longer. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present Item Number Five, please.
It is requested an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Gel A. Doak Trustee for the purchase of real property located at 3201 West Monroe Street and identified as parcel number 59-01180, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the city's charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
There were a couple of different concerns that were raised regarding this particular project. First, it is going to be followed by a lease that will completely reimburse the city's expense in acquisition. And the purchase price is based, as the communication did case upon an appraisal. You know, sometimes the auditor's website can be a pretty good guide for rough values, sometimes not. And I think the city does the right thing in obtaining an appraisal so that we know what the real value is. And the other thing that I'd point out is that, you know, there's a question of, why isn't the county doing this? Well, we need to go back a little bit of history, because this is the Sandusky Erie County Health Department. It's both. We used to have independent, separate health departments, and they were merged together, I don't know how many years ago, long before I was involved in local government. And so this is our health department. So I think it's perfectly appropriate that we do this. The health department has grown in terms of capability and the number of people that it's served in recent years. Thanks, it's a really great leadership there, one of whom is in the room with us today, so thank you for that. And, you know, I think it's appropriate that they make the health department more visible just because it has become a very large, very substantial organization that contributes mightily to our community. So I support this.
Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali.
I think I recall the last meeting or the meeting before where the health department came, and they were going to fund some programs, some demolition programs and some other programs for us. And they've been very active in lead-based paint removal in the city of Sandusky. So I appreciate the fact that we can work with these partnerships, and I hope there's additional partnerships in the future. I would also like to note that I appreciate the fact that I know Mr. Stidham and Mr. Jones aren't here anymore, but the fact that the Erie County Land Bank has come in to assist us also, I hope this is the beginning of more partnerships with them down the road.
I'd like to address a comment made earlier also regarding the neighborhood. I can tell you that I do not believe that this is a less than desirable neighborhood. And I hope none of my fellow commissioners believe that either. And I assure you, none of the residents that live in that neighborhood believe it's an undesirable neighborhood. I think the west side is a neighborhood, like many of our neighborhoods, if you characterize it as less than desirable, I think it is a mischaracterization. Just my view.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I agree with what you said about the characterization of, mischaracterization of the neighborhood. Additionally, I consider this neighborhood to be the place where we have an opportunity to attract people to move to. It's near the water. It's, I've been down there and looked and seen what people are doing with their homes, and it has a lot of potential. The fact that it came off of being a CDBG-eligible area in the last three years is an indication and shows that people with income are moving there, because that's how you get off of, why it's no longer eligible. I don't think it's eligible for CEBG anymore. The other thing, too, how do we, okay, never mind. But anyway, the area is growing. That still doesn't answer why the county didn't buy, isn't paying for this. I don't understand why. It's nice that we get along, but the county has their own money. So could somebody answer that? Mr. Holiday?
Mr. Webster, you?
Yeah, whoever.
I can speak to that through the commission president. Director Holliday had texted me that he had to step away, but these were part of a series of conversations we had with the health department. I think Commission Vice President Murray said it well, you know, a significant portion of the health department's board is actually appointed by the city commission, and they are a joint Sandusky Erie County Health Department. There were broader goals at play here with the investment that the health department was making in its campus, much of which has been supported by the Erie County Commissioners. They were looking to us for this specific investment, which was part of a broader conversation about how to raise the visibility of the health department within the city, because they don't have great visibility where they're at now. And providing, taking this house down and putting the ability to have a new gateway sign to the health department was important. In addition to that, they've discussed creating a sidewalk right now. You know, a predominantly low-income population uses the health department, and I believe it's about 13% of Sandusky residents don't have access to an automobile. And I think over 30% of households in Sandusky have access to only one automobile, and obviously multiple people living in those homes. So this provides an opportunity for those who are getting there by bike and foot safely. So as part of a broader package of a partnership, and with the ability to be reimbursed and to trigger this investment, and the county land bank, who we heard from earlier, willing to make an investment in the demolition, we think this is a great collaboration between the health department, the county land bank, and the Erie County Commissioners, along with the city.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I'm trying to pick out of that the parts of it that I, what is this going to be? Okay, we're going to take a house down, and what's going to replace it? You said a sidewalk and a sign, is that what you said?
I believe.
Is that what this is going?
to create an Erie County Health Department sign to let people know, a bigger sign that lets people know that they're arriving. I don't know if Mr. Hardy wants to speak to any of this at all, but yeah.
That's the gist of it. Obviously, it's a beautification project. It's a kind of awareness project for us to get more exposure so people don't keep driving up and down Monroe Street or other streets. So we thought it was a natural partnership with the city to come in and have you guys be part of the process, designing a view, working, you know, as the city manager said, you're putting a sidewalk through this run of east and west, we're going to connect that running north and south from Monroe Street down. So we just felt like we were going to continue to come back to you guys, not working with the county to get this done and get approval. So we thought it was a natural partnership.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole.
I can accept that. Anything that we ultimately decide to spend our money on is a partnership with somebody in which someone benefits, some folks, doesn't matter, and some folks it's detrimental. I think our key here is trying to figure out whether or not, it sounds to me like your beautification project is a $100,000 sign that doesn't even purchase the sign. And using CDBG money on that, we just had a presentation that said neighborhood revitalization was our prime thing we're going to do. And replacing a home on a lot that's near the waterfront with a sign does benefit the health department and health department may believe that their business needs more visibility or whatever, I'm not sure. I would suggest that commercial signs for commercial businesses make sense. They're looking for drive-by traffic, they want people to notice them. I would suggest that the health department is a destination and the clientele that go there know where it is or find out before they go. And a $100,000 lot plus price of demolishing the building, plus the price of the sign, is not something that we as commissioners should be, we need something a little stronger to make that a good idea when we're tearing down a house in an area that we should, we're trying to get more population here. I'll just, that's probably five minutes, I'll wait, let somebody else comment, and then I'll get my next five.
If I may, Commission President, fill in some of the gaps here because there's actually multiple pieces of this project that we've been working on. So it's not just a sign. The purchase price, the acquisition price, the way this deal is structured is because of a unique set of circumstances that the health department finds itself in where they cannot acquire property in this manner. So therefore, the Erie County or the city of Sandusky would have to acquire property legally. So they are not able to just buy this property. So the way we are working on structuring this is that the city will purchase the property for approximately the appraised value, then negotiate a lease process that would have to come to city commission, that would reimburse the city fully for the purchase price over the term of that lease. It would allow then the Erie County Land Reutilization, or the Erie County Land Bank has agreed or has offered, and we're working out on the details, which would also bring the city commission, to demolish the building so that that cost would not come to the city. That cost would be borne by the Erie County Land Reutilization Corporation, which would then provide the land bank with an unusable site. They would like to put a sign, there's discussions about the sidewalk and some other amenities, but there's also been, I think the Erie County Health Department is talking to our Public Works Department and some other folks about redoing a complete street, so some safety improvements and some other infrastructure improvements to that area. So it's not just we're buying this property and then we're building them a sign. Also, the sign is not part of this particular purchase agreement. So this is actually designed to be cost neutral for the city. It's designed to provide site control to one of our partners and it's designed to provide a number of safety enhancements to that area, to people trying to utilize the health department. I think there was maybe some, I just wanted to clarify like exactly how this project is.
Good explanation. Thank you. Good explanation. So we are out of pocket, we are nothing at the end of that lease?
We are, it is intended to be cost neutral, yes.
Thank you. Additional comments, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, you call?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'll finish. I need to address what he just spoke to. At any date rate, whether you redo the road or not, the health department is 200 yards down the street. It's a separate project. The issue at hand is this piece of property sitting on the corner and the concept that we are, they cannot buy it and you have worked out a workaround, there must be a reason that they can't buy it, is the first step, okay? If the government has, if there's laws that prevent them from making this purchase, us making a straw purchase, I don't think is appropriate. So then finding a workaround to get around it. We are not being, the taxpayers are not being reimbursed anything. They are buying a $100,000 lot to put a sign on and as you said, they kind of disgust sidewalks, not that they're putting them in. Because the taxpayers also fund the Erie County Health Department. This is not economic development where we have, we think we're going to put in $100,000 now and we're putting in a factory that's going to bring jobs or anything whatsoever. This is beautification of an entrance to a public facility that the taxpayers are going to eat $100,000 on, that I think should be, if you want to buy this place, tear it down in partnership with the county land bank and then resell it to somebody, put a house on it, that sounds like it's within the realm of what we say we're trying to do. And that's what I was talking about, Mr. Roman. I agree with everything you said, show me you're going to do it. If you want to say the health departments, present that the health department's project will fail if they don't put this sign out there and whatever else it is, then we can have a conversation. But as it stands now, they are 200 yards down the road anticipating doing some work 100 yards down the road and a gateway sign that charges the taxpayers this much money, I think is wrong. And it may actually be the fact that we're circumventing the rule that prevents them from buying it and coming with a workaround is, I think is a mistake that should be researched. So I'm just going to vote no. Do what you wish. Thank you, I'm done.
Ms. Myers, you call a role on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda. We will turn to our city manager. Missing one?
Joe.
Had to turn my page. Last one took so long, I got nervous, I wasn't ready yet. Myers, you present the next item.
It's requested in ordinance declaring a 2007 medium-duty freightliner ambulance VIN number as unnecessary and unfit for the city use pursuant to section 25 of the city charter, authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the purchase of a 2024 medium-duty freightliner ambulance through the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program from Horton Emergency Vehicles of Grove City, Ohio, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Chief, almost cost you an ambulance. Comments or questions, Commissioner?
I'm just curious if we know how many miles are on this, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I must be recognized. I'm just curious if we know how many miles is on this vehicle. I can't imagine seeing these vehicles go up and down the streets all day long. They last for 12 years. It's a testament to the city crew that maintains these vehicles, the fleet department. That's just really incredible that we got 12 years out of it. Chief, any sense of how many miles are on this?
Offhand, I couldn't tell you exactly what they are. But this is, we are looking ahead and there's a two-year waitlist once you sign an agreement to purchase an ambulance now. So that's why we're asking to purchase it now. This will still have to be in service for another two years before we can get rid of it.
Oh, I see.
Out there. Additional questions or comments? Ms. Myers, you call a role in the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present the last item on our agenda.
It's requested in ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with greater Sandusky partnership for certain economic development and marketing services and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Murray?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to section 14 of the city's charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Murray?
We've discussed this quite a bit, but I just wanted to ask Mr. Whoopser to confirm one particular item or perhaps Mr. Heil, I don't know who is the appropriate source to confirm this, but there's some concern that was expressed about whether or not the GSP would be assuming some of the city's responsibilities and some of the committees that we have that meet publicly and have public participation. I don't believe that to be the case, but I wanted to just make sure that we touched on that.
Through the commission president to Commission Vice President Murray, they would not be taking over any of the economic development programs. Their role would be creating additional capacity with the current functions of the chamber and the Erie County Economic Development Corporation, as well as adding some capacity in other areas like advocacy, community branding, and physical development, which includes infrastructure planning and large-scale like catalytic real estate developments. But that would be outside the scope of all the services currently provided by the city of Sandusky.
Thank you, Mr. Whoopser. Ms. Myers, you call a role in that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Stay.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Stay.
That ordinance is passed. I can't believe those guys left before we voted on this.
Go figure.
Good for them. Mr. Whoopser, that concludes our agenda and now it is your turn.
Thank you, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I'll start with the donations. The Pizzie Family Fund of the Columbus Law Enforcement Foundation donated $200 to be used in conjunction with our community policing initiatives. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Objection, motion to be approved, hearing no objection, that motion is approved.
Great. And then a donation in the amount of $100 from the Sandusky Memorial Day Association in participation of the 74th Memorial Day Parade. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Objection, that motion will be approved, hearing no objection, that motion is approved. With our thanks.
Moving on to finance, the Government Finance Officers Association has awarded the city of Sandusky a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the 2020 financial reports. So thanks to Director Reader and her team for that, as well as all the others who helped in that oversight. For the police, we were notified late Friday afternoon, some more good news, that the department was awarded $232,380 through grant funding from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services to pay retention bonuses for current police officers and recruitment bonuses for new officers that were hired this year. I want to thank Chief Oliver and his team, he was really on top of applying for that and called me with that good news Friday afternoon. For Public Works, the emergency generator at the wastewater treatment plant has been reinstalled and will likely be back online within the next two weeks. Thank you to Moser and their team for their hard work to move as quickly as possible. For planning, save the date for the South Side Plan Community Visioning Workshop, which will be held at Mills School on Thursday, August 18th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Everyone who would like to contribute to the vision for the future of the South Side is invited to attend. More details will be coming soon. Please follow City of Sandusky on social media and visit, I lost a page here, visit the city's website at www.cityofsandusky.com for more information. For Sandusky Transit, the Sandusky Transit System in coordination with the Ohio Department of Transportation, Office of Transit, is conducting an evaluation of the existing transit system. It's part of a five-year transportation development plan. Two public participation meetings will be held to discuss the transportation needs of the community and ideas for improving the existing system to meet those needs. Please come and tell us about your transportation needs and ideas for the future. Please join us Monday, July 18th, from noon to 1:30 p.m. or 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the Sandusky Library Program Blue Room located at 114 West Adams Street. And thank you to James Stacey, our transit administrator, who's helping to administer that strategic planning process. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to take comments or questions. Thank you.
Comments or questions for the city manager, Commissioner? Items of old business, any items of old business, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wantington?
We had a meeting today, Mr. Horstman, our clerk, Mrs. Myers, Commissioner Pajali, myself. Last year, we initiated or started the 2021 Community Awards for volunteers in our community. And last year's, the ones that we chose were Jim Corso, Mr. Chuck LaCoco, and Mama Collins for the first three. When we come out of the meeting today, those four decided, and Mrs. Myers, Mr. Horstman's going to work on that, we're going to try to get two or three residents to volunteer to sit down and go over, you know, some ideas of who's out in the Sandusky community that's worthy of this. There's certainly, I could come up with a lot of names, but I think it'd be better if we had a group each year as far as to choose these. And then out of that, the other thing that we want to do that, I had conversations last week, Mr. Pajali, is recognize some of the past founders of the community, like downtown, like Mr., like Bob Davis, I know he's passed, but the Chesapeake, maybe Mr. Delahoune with his condos. I'm just throwing examples out now, the Gilbert condos, County Building. I even mentioned, I talked briefly today to Mr. Commissioner Murray, even his dad, like the Murray Law Building downtown, that was done prior. And to me, that was the Marina Net, that was the original catalyst, I'm going back to the 70s and 80s, that took their own money and took a chance on the city of Sandusky. And I love what we're doing today and I hope it keeps going forward, you know, we're doing a lot of good things down here. But sometimes you have to, I don't want to say out of respect, but acknowledge these folks for what they did. They took a gamble when I know 25 years ago, you could roll a bowling ball down Columbus Ave and that hit nothing, okay? I know what it was like. I saw, you know, go down to nothing, all the box stores leave, no residents down here. You're lucky if you had a little coffee shop or a little bakery. Downtown was basically a ghost town, so. And now look at it today, every day, I just, you know, like in the morning, since I'm retired, I drive through downtown every day and just like, wow, you know, look at all the people, look at all the events going on. So it's changed, but I think it's time, sometimes you have to take a snapshot of how we got here. There was, you know, Mr. Davis took a big, big gamble and I remember sitting on that big bus when he come up from Columbus and I said, I don't see anything. And he challenged me to come up with an idea and we had two doors there and they were both, Dennis and Dick, you might have both been at them, we had over 200 people to go through, he gave us hard hats, walked through, because from the exterior, it looked like an old factory. But inside, he was building, you know, something I would say is a gem on the waterfront for our community.
Absolutely.
Just my opinion. And the state's being rebuilt, I'll get off my rant now. But anyway, that's kind of like, I'd like to parlay both in together and let's reach out to the community and, you know, there's a lot of people do good things and volunteer, you know, in this area. Just for the love of Sandusky. I'm done.
Commissioner Murray?
I just want to echo that thought. I've probably expressed this at this table before, but I'll take a moment to express it again. You know, all of us here, we're just taking a turn at the bat, right? There are going to be a lot of people that come after us, there are going to be a lot of, there have been a lot of people that have come before us. And, you know, we have this great period of growth right now where we're harnessing all these assets and we've got a lot of energy in the community. And it is because there were people who worked for decades to preserve the special things that we enjoy today. We don't take them for granted, but we know that these people worked to make sure the state theater was preserved, that the Sandusky Library was preserved, that many of the historic buildings that we have. Think about the contributions that Eli Don made to make sure, you know, sometimes people don't like the fact they've got an historical building, but, you know, it's really important. That's the character of Sandusky. And so there are many people, we stand on there, it's a little bit trite to say we stand on their shoulders, I suppose, but we do. And they preserved all that so we could have this moment. So I think you're right on.
Thank you.
Might be an opportunity to turn that into something that you maybe call Founder's Day or something like that, where we choose to honor, you know, that group of people, but that ties in perfectly with the Volunteer of the Year Award, too. That's kind of the present and the past.
That's kind of why I wanted to get, when I talked to Ms. Myers and Mr. Horstman, I'm excited to have him involved in it, you know, he's got a lot of good ideas. But if we can get two or three residents to join us, and there's stuff that we're not even thinking about, I'm just trying to, it's time to pay back a little bit, okay? Acknowledge these folks, we kind of go each year. Susan Sardar does the Christmas program every year for what, I think it's over three years now, July 4th, you know, someone like that's got to be recognized.
Yes, absolutely.
Just my opinion.
Excellent. Additional items of old business?
Mr. Chairman, we followed up that meeting with a meeting on the neighborhood walk. And I had brought that up at a commission meeting a few meetings ago. And again, it was Ms. Myers and Mr. Horstman and Mr. Wantington stayed around for that. He did share the story about breaking the champagne down at the Chesapeake. I can't believe a man would actually break a bottle of champagne and not drink it. But anyhow, we've kind of come to the conclusion, I'm going to work with Mr. Horstman in between this meeting and the meeting on the 25th, maybe meet here at 3:30 and get a transit bus. And I know Mr. Wantington's very bullish on the South Side Plan that's going on at this very moment. So we want to go out to the South Side, maybe focus on MacArthur Park, stroll through MacArthur Park, Clay Street, that area, walk with the people and see if they have any comments for the Sandusky City Commissioners. So you will all be invited when we finalize things, but I wanted to give you a heads up, we'll go on the bus about 3:30, go out there and be back here, but I would think 4:30, somewhere in that nature.
Great. Excellent. Additional items of old business, Commissioners? Items of new business, any items of new business? I have some housekeeping here. I will ask for a motion to schedule a public hearing for August 22nd, commission meeting for a planning commission recommendation for approval of FEMA and NFIP required changes to the floodplain regulations.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a role in that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.[1701.24]
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That motion, that public hearing is set. Any additional items of new business, Commissioners? There any public comments on any item that pertains to city business? Please step to the podium, share with us your name, address, and your thoughts.
Mr. Mayor, Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. Wanted to share a story with you from this past Saturday. I had the pleasure of participating in the cleanup with Mr. Wantington and Mr. Pajali at Ambetts Park. And just out of the blue, there was a resident that lives on Central Ave that came up and was asking about the Festival of Sale at the Jackson Street Pier over the Fourth of July. And his concerns kind of resonated throughout the entire Facebook, social media venue. And the questions were—the actually, there was a concern that the vendors didn't do very well on the pier because of low attendance, due to the fact that there was a $33 fee